The time is 4:30 PM. The Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of 13 February 2024 is called to order. I'd ask those in our council chambers, if you have not signed in, please sign in at the clipboard by the back door before you leave, and I'd ask everybody to please put their phones on vibrate. A roll call of members. Patty?
Steve Foster.
Here.
Kurt Markrop.
Here.
Mayor Brent Fraser.
Here.
Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Steve Strand.
Here.
Thank you. I want to welcome each and one of you to our city council meeting this evening. Those in the council chambers, those joining us by Zoom. Remember, our city council meetings are on the Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also seen on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. Just a few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Remember tomorrow, Wednesday, February 14th is Valentine's Day. Monday, February 19th is President's Day. City Hall offices will be closed. Monday, February 26th, at 5:30 PM is the 2024 Pelican Rapids Complete Street Project Assessments Hearing, which will be held at the Pelican Rapids High School Fine Arts Auditorium. Tuesday, February 27th, 4:30 PM is our next city council meeting, which we will have to be done by 6:00 PM that night because that same night is precinct caucus across the state of Minnesota, and by state statute, we have, there can't be no public meetings after 6:00 PM. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? If not, if you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comment. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Anyone for citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none. Item number three is additions and deletions to the agenda. I have one addition. It's item number 15. It's a pay request to Hammer's Construction for the Aquatic Center. Item number 15 is pay request to Hammer's Construction. Any other additions or deletions?
I'll move the agenda with the addition.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number 4A is approval of council minutes from January 30th, 2024. 4B is approval accounts payable listing. 4C, one is financial report. 4E is Pelican Rapids Pool Committee Meetings Minutes, which are in the packet. Item 4D is certify unpaid utility bills to property taxes, parcel number 7600099010700, in the amount of $391.69. The other one from 4D is parcel number 7600099016200, in the amount of $362.71. And item 4F is administrative penalty of parcel number 760009904400, in the amount of $50. Is there a motion to ex-
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carried. Item number five is fire department. We have Chief Chad Hansen here, and he's gonna, there was a fire call report in a packet, and he's also gonna talk to us about Wildland Two in the township meeting, which is coming up shortly. Chad?
All right. Fire calls for 2023. We had a total of 83 fire calls, both city and rural, including mutual aid. 57 rural calls, 22 calls in the city of Pelican for mutual aid. Any questions, I guess, on the city calls in town? We had five lift assists, 10 alarms. Besides that, it was just a couple little gas lines, a little bush on fire, a couple people in an elevator. So.
Any questions for the chief?
Okay.
If not, is there a motion to approve the fire call report for 2023? Second? The motion second, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carried.
With that, there's also a township meeting, March 6th, 6 o'clock, at the fire hall. And the next agenda, I guess, we're here to discuss options on replacing our Wildland Two truck. I think Mr. Fraser handed out some papers for you guys. I guess the background on the Wildland True Truck that we have now, it's a 2001 Chevy one-ton duly. Obviously, it's 23 years old. It's got 17,000 miles on it, which are pretty hard miles, I guess.
17,000?
17,000.
That's all?
That's all. But if you put miles in a fire truck, you gotta think of a vehicle that sits there in a fire hall, doesn't move, doesn't move, and all of a sudden you hop in it and you go from zero to 80 down the road. You drive through a field and bounce it around. You drive through, charge grass, woods. Gets beat up pretty fast. I think it's had four sets of tires on it already at 17,000 miles. So, um, the options in front of you, I guess. Option one, a 2024 F-350 crew cab with just chassis from Nelson Ford. We would put a utility body on it from Burt's, paint the top half of the cab, lettering, wiring and lights, and put a new skid unit, which is the water and the pump in the back. Total comes to just under $89,000. We would sell the old Wildland Two truck as a grass rig to hopefully a different department. Estimated trying to get $20,000 out of it. In that truck is also a 2,000 Plaires 400 that we would sell for $600. I guess we would be asking for $68,320. Option two would be a 2024 F-350 crew cab with just a regular truck box in the back from Nelson Ford. That truck is $57,500. Paint the top half of the cab, the lettering, the wiring and the lights, and the skid unit. That total comes to $78,700. Again, we would sell the truck for $20,000, sell the four-wheeler for $600. We would be asking for $58,107. The reason we're asking this is these trucks are not on a truck replacement schedule. We have five trucks down in the fire hall that are not on a schedule. The other four are. Rescue One is, Engine One is, and the two tankers are on a schedule. So we don't know when they get replaced or how they get replaced is, I guess, kind of what I'm getting at with it.
How do they get placed on the schedule? I mean, is that just something we decided to put them on a schedule?
We're gonna try and figure something out to put them on. We did just replace Wildland One here a couple of years ago, found some money miraculously and replaced it. So.
So the state emergency funding, that's dollars you-
So, the city had received $112,000 in state emergency funding.
Public safety aid, that public safety aid money?
Um, there is, Fire Department falls under that, and so does the police. I guess I just kind of split it in half, hoping and praying that we would get half. So if we even got $56,000, I know that's not everything, but if there was a start, we could figure out if we had to raise enough money to get, cover the rest.
So in option one, you guys have, there's a utility body?
Yep.
But there's not in option two?
Option two, we would just run the regular truck box. We can put some utility boxes on the side. Our Wildland Two right now, that's what it has. It's a flatbed, one-ton duly with utility boxes on the side, not an actual whole box, I guess. It'd be a toolbox mounted on the side of it.
And it carries the-
Carries the shovels, the rakes, chainsaw, tow ropes.
Does it carry your four-wheeler?
The four-wheeler, we're gonna get rid of and not replace. We have two side-by-sides. We've noticed in the last probably year and a half that we don't use that four-wheeler, and so it's time to get rid of it. Because right now, we're just maintaining it. So, these trucks both pull a trailer with a side-by-side on them.
Chad, which option are you preferring?
Whichever one you guys want to approve.
Yeah, but you know which is the best.
Wildland One has the utility body from Burt's, the one that we just replaced a couple of years ago. If we wanted them to match, you would put the Burt's truck box, that body on there. Do they have to match? Absolutely not. Um, you know, but it's easier compartments. You're not trying to reach up, grab rakes out of the top, stores things separately so they're not all in the same box bouncing around. So.
With option one, you're talking about?
Yes, with option one. With option two, with just the regular truck box, we would mount the toolboxes on the side of it and do that. So.
What is the urgency at this time?
Urgency right now, there is some repairs that need to be done on our Wildland Two. I only have rough numbers, I do not have an actual estimate. We weren't able to get it into somebody to get, go through it completely. It needs tires. Tires are ballpark at about $1,400. The AC does not work. We've tried recharging it a few times, doesn't hold. The fuel transfer pump, that one has two gas tanks on it. That pump is out, so we can't pump the gas out of the back tank into the front tank. And also, our fuel gauge doesn't work. So, as of right now, our protocol is every time that truck leaves the fire hall, we have to bring it to the gas station to fuel it, just because we don't know how much gas is in it.
If this is approved, what's the delivery time?
Um, within a year, I, let's see.
Two to five months for the truck.
Okay.
How much?
Two to five months, let's go off delivery.
So then, get it, get it lettered, get everything on it, and then sell our other truck after. So.
So in other words, sooner the better, right?
Yes.
So if, if you get the state, the state dollars, whatever.
We, we received the public safety aid in December for $111,761. We have that right now.
So if, if that, if you get that for each option, it still leaves a balance of $20,600?
Correct.
So where does that?
Um, the sale of the one truck for $20,000, obviously, that would cover a portion of We're gonna try and reach out for some donations for that skid unit. We haven't reached out to anybody yet because, you know, we would be looking at like the VFW, see what they could donate. Possibly the turkey plant, a few other donations around town. If we approve it, we might have some money in the relief fund that we could donate as well towards it.
When did you start thinking about this?
Trevor had actually brought it up here back in August. It never got brought to a council meeting.
Or never got brought here?
Never got brought to the council meeting. But he had started doing research on trucks. We found out about the money. We didn't come in and ask for it because you guys hadn't received the money yet. Kind of hard to ask for something when you don't have it to give. The only reason the option is here is you have free money. Every truck in the fire hall is owned by the city. So at some point in time, the city has to replace the truck. I guess our thoughts was is free money is easy to use versus trying to find money to pay for it.
Just one thing to think about. So in the past, I know, you know, the debt service is shared among the townships and us, so I mean, somehow I think we can almost use ourselves as a, as a funding, but then get almost reimbursed at some of this cost on their share?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
So the townships don't know about this either?
This is the first that's getting brought up. I gotta start with you guys before I can bring it to a township.
Lance, are you okay with either option then? I mean, is-
Well, this is a tough one, this public safety aid. I mean, it doesn't, certainly, I mean, we can use it Fire Department, Police Department, all that. I know our Police Department is in the midst of getting geared back up, and that, that costs money to get back to where we need to be on the equipment and personnel and all that other stuff. So I hesitate a little bit just to say, okay, we're gonna take half of it and go on a new truck, but what you guys think is fair, I don't know if you want to split it half and half. I mean, it doesn't, go ahead.
Have you, I know it's just the first night, but can you look into doing the lease purchase like we have with the public works vehicles?
Yeah, we certainly could, but-
And because two to five months, that first payment that wouldn't be due till middle of the year, just after, right? Just, just a thought.
My other question is, do you already have somebody lined up to buy?
We do not.
So I mean, you're potentially sitting on one that you need, I mean, you still need to come up with $20,600. And if we're gonna wait for the sale of a truck, that, you know, that could be eight months down the road, as opposed to the four or five months down the road, or-
So ultimately, we only need the truck to move forward. You know, if you go option one, it's tough. You'd have a truck with no box, none, no nothing. If we do option two, we would have a truck that would pull, you know, if we had to pull the skid unit out of the old one, we could and throw it in the back of this one before sale. It's just easier to sell that truck as a fire truck. We don't need to purchase some of this other stuff immediately until we sell that truck. Like the, the lights, the lettering, paint in the cab, and the skid unit. The skid unit, once we get it, we installed the last one. All they do is they drop it in on freight. We bolt it into the box and fill it, and then it's ready to go. So, I, I don't have, I guess, everything ironed out, I can tell you that.
We'll make a note to Chad that he doesn't have. Trevor researches-
Brady, do you want to address the microphone so that people on TV watching can hear you?
What he doesn't have in his notes, when I talked to Ford, Trevor researches back in August, and maybe seven months ago. The price has gone up $7,000 since he researched in August for the truck. And, I mean, who knows with the way the economic times are going, how much more is gonna go up the next seven months.
So this same truck we bought back in '21 for $35,748.
Well, one thing I find a little bit frustrating is here we are talking about buying a truck.
Correct.
We did our budgeting, no word about buying a truck.
Okay.
So I find that a little bit frustrating and disappointing that now we're talking about buying a truck.
Sure.
And I want you to understand that from our point of view, that-
Correct.
-when we try and lay out our plan for the year-
Yep.
-we need to have that information.
Okay. It is duly noted, as I am trying to learn this role.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Well, Trevor should have, if he was looking at buying a truck in August-
Yep.
-that should have been brought to our attention then, and it wasn't.
Okay.
I think the only reason he did is because as he found out this public safety aid money, and he knew that this truck wasn't on a replacement schedule, and that's why he started looking into it. But that's the reason, but.
Before we even take any action, can this vehicle be put on this schedule for future?
We're trying to. I have reached out to Lance here. There is five vehicles, like I said, that are not on this replacement schedule. The last one, the Suburban, we bought from the school for $5,000 back in 2017. We are actually trying to work on a replacement for that one. Lance doesn't even know about that one yet. We're trying to get a donation from another entity to replace that truck, so that we don't have to come and ask you guys for more money. Otherwise, yes. I would like to get them all on a truck schedule, so that we're not having to try and deal with this every 10, 15, 20 years.
It'd be interesting to see what the lease, lease-to-purchase option, I mean, what that would look like as far as cost, but, yeah.
You could get that in two weeks' time, couldn't you, Lance?
Yep.
We could talk about it next meeting again?
Is there anything else I need to get for information for you guys?
What, what information do you need for the, putting the remaining five on the replacement schedule?
Well, we'll have to sit down and look at the current schedule and see, and we can look at, you know, there, there are some debt service that's going off. One just went off this year, I know. The SCBA's, the last payment was just this last, or this last January.
Right.
And then there's another truck lease payment that's coming up in '26, and then the building itself in '27. So there are some things that are coming off the debt service, so we can factor that in with the trucks that need to be replaced and start looking at-
Because Rescue One will be going, we'll start looking at trucks to spec them out. That one is on a truck schedule already. That one should get replaced in '26. Takes about a year and a half to build that truck right now. And then I think it was in '27, that Tanker Two is on a truck schedule to get replaced.
Lance, what was the number again for the public safety dollars that came in?
111,761.
Yep.
111,761.
And we'll be bringing that up. I mean, Todd's gonna have some requests here shortly on some equipment for using some of that money as well, so.
So look, so we'll be addressing that then again at our next council meeting?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Chad?
That is all I had for today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to item number 10. Park, street and park report, right? We got a, we have a public hearing at 5:00 PM, so that's why we're jumping all over here.
Pretty sure, won't take 12. We'll see. I'll have to pause if I can, because I got a, um, street, streetwise has been, continues to be a good winter. We've had the shovel and sand, but that's no, nothing out of the ordinary. Been doing a lot of maintenance on some equipment. We have one of the plow trucks, thank goodness, we haven't had to use it because we're in the process of doing some repairs, and also on the street sweeper, we got several parts that we need to replace in order to make that usable, so keeping busy doing that. Parks end of it, getting ranked between the school and us, decided we're not gonna try to reflood that thing in this year. It was open for a little while, but then it just got to the point where, no, and the weather isn't, hasn't been real great for making it. Then we're gonna just talk about the pool really quick. They're tentatively saying they could maybe open in July. We have zero lifeguards that are certified at this point from previous years. So if we're gonna open in July, we're going to have to, when to hire lifeguards? And do we hire them? And then what do we do with them until we open? And, and how many are we gonna get? The other option is, is to work with, at the pool park board meeting yesterday, a couple of the coaches said, well, we have kids that practice every day. If we could get them trained, they don't want a full-time job. You know, they just want a part-time, it'd be great. If we could get them certified, maybe they, you know, they would be interested. So they were gonna talk to some of the kids that they coach, and, and that could be a great asset to us, really. Get them involved, and then maybe we can have them for, for years down the road. But the other option is to talk to area pools and see if they have extra guards for a weekend, like a grand opening weekend, but it would be very limited open. So my feeling is that we should advertise, get them trained, and we pay for their training. But the deal was they had to work so many hours. This year being unique, not, you know, may open in July, may not open, I think we, we don't look at having them work the hours, so many hours to reimburse them. I think if we can get some kids to go to guard training, we, we just pay and maybe say, you do have to work for us next year, or something, just so we know we have some guards.
Do you recall what that training cost was?
It's about $200 a person, yep. So it, it is an expense, there's no doubt, but we, we also need lifeguards in order to be open, so. And, and like you say, maybe if we just want to do a, a weekend grand opening, we don't worry about it, worry about it next year. But if we want to be open, if we can in July into August, we're gonna need a little more stability in lifeguards, so.
What was the architect shooting for around July 4th?
That's their tentative, yes. And they claim they're still on, according to the last, last report, so.
Usually shut down when in August?
Uh, usually about the third week in August. So there is, it's, it's a shortened season, but I don't think our community's gonna like it if we, all of a sudden this pool's ready to go and we don't try to open it. You know, they're, they, I think they want it open.
You actually want equipment up and running before-
Yes, they want to do a, they want to do a open and, and shut down with us regardless, so it will be up and going. I think it's important that we try to open it with, with what we have, so. So that, kind of my opinion is, is we should maybe advertise and then just explain to these, whoever applies, that get your training, we'll assist you with that training. If you work for us, not, not so many hours, but at least work for us, we'll reimburse that training to you. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would suggest that if you explore some other options, if you can get these kids trained and then maybe have them do some mowing or-
Well, there-
Anything, I mean, but-
Yeah. There is some of that-
You gotta have the people trained and in place when that pool opens.
Um, there is some of that, because I do hire, you know, I will need to hire a mower person this year, and I will need to hire a couple for the trimming and push mowing and the little things. And that's where, I mean, these, these people can assist, but a lot of them don't have full-time jobs, and we kind of need that stability when we have thing, you know, weekly to get things done in the city. So, I mean, yes, there is some areas they can assist, but I, I think that just by getting and paying for their training is gonna be huge.
Okay. Okay.
So, that's, that's where I'm, I'm at, so you'll probably see some ads come out and, got a list, bunch of emails out of where training is, so I can assist them, where, where to go, and stuff like that, so.
How many guards did we need now? Like, last time we had two, I think, uh, you know, watching both sides of the pool deck or?
Yeah, and then we had one on deck, and what did we say? Now there'll be at least five.
Yeah, for the different stations.
For the different stations, yep. So there may be times, like normal, that these kids are busy, we may not be able to have one parked or another open just because of that, but hopefully we get a lot of kids that, a lot of people that wanna be lifeguards, and we can, we can have everything going full, so. All right? Any questions?
Anything else?
Nope, I think that's it.
Is there a motion to accept Brian's?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same, motion carried, thank you.
Perfect.
At this time, we are going to recess our city council meeting and go into a public hearing. The time is 5:01 PM. It's item number six, it's Small Cities Development Program Public Hearing. This is from Ottertail County HRA, and we have Mitch Henry and Tanya Westra here this evening. Remember during our public hearing, we cannot make any motions, just to listen to the speakers and if there's any input from the, the council, the audience this evening. So at this time.
Sure, so just a quick review where we're at. Our pre-application was deemed competitive, they put them into three categories.
Could, could you step back a little in history to explain, to refresh our memory, how this all started?
Sure, I kinda came on when it started too, so I don't have a real deep history of it. Just the program itself, or?
No, no, I mean, the grant you're looking for.
Yeah, so we, um, yeah.
Uh, so we were approached, um, by city members, uh, a few years ago to, um, send out surveys to homeowners, commercial property owners, rental unit owners within the city, to see if there was enough interest to warrant an application to deed for the Small Cities Development Program grant. The first year that we surveyed, there was not enough interest to proceed with an application, but this past year, the survey results did indicate that there was. So a pre-application was submitted to deed, and they, um, notified us that it is competitive, and we've been invited back for the full application. Part of that full application process is to have the public hearing for citizen participation and input, um, and then we would need to have, you know, just the documentation for that in order to submit that application, so that's the purpose of the public hearing.
Sure, so then, um, just to review, um, we're proposing to do 17 units of owner-occupied rehabilitation, and that's covered through the whole city limits. 10 units of commercial rehabilitation in the designated slum and blight district. So the overall cost of the project is $1,075,260. 948,750 of that is coming from the Small Cities Program. That breaks down to 25,000 maximum per owner-occupied project, and 40,000 or 80% of the total project cost for the commercial. The Ottertail County HRA is gonna contribute 119,000, that's 7,000 per owner-occupied project, just to get that 25,000 a little bit higher, so you can get a little bit more done. The City of Pelican Rapids agreed to waive the permit fees, so that's included in that cost. Uh, scheduled going forward, the full applications are due April 17th, and deed says the notice of award will be summer of 2024. So if we look at, if we just call it June 1st, which it may or may not be, um, we'd be looking at June through August, doing some background stuff, some environmental clearance, um, accepting applications from homeowners and businesses, and, um, then doing some initial inspections. About middle of September or so then, we would award the first jobs and begin construction on them. And so then the final jobs would be awarded, that would run through June 1st of 2025. Projects would have to be complete by September of 2025. And then just a little bit on the past performance, since we're the applicant, um, the Ottertail County HRA, we currently administer this grant in Battle Lake and Underwood, um, and our staff has over eight years' experience administering seven total Small Cities grants.
When we reconvene our city council meeting, we can't make motion, are you looking for a motion at, at any point or not?
No, no.
Information?
Yep, and we're just open for public comment now.
Any questions? Lance, do you have anything to add?
No, just thanks for all your work on this, this is gonna be exciting if it happens, yeah.
We have our economic development director here, Jordan Grossman. Jordan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just relay that the public interest in this moving forward is very high, and the HRA has done a great job with the pre-application and, um, keeping, keeping everything at a competitive level, so hopefully we receive funding soon.
Council, have any questions, comments? Okay, any comments before we close the public hearing? Any comments? Any comments? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, the time is 5:07 PM, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene our city council meeting. Go on to item number seven, police purchase approvals. We have Chief of Police Todd Quatens with us this evening, uh, he has two or three different bullet points there. Chief?
Thank you. Before we get into the bullet points, um, just wanted each of you to also see that, your stations, there was the police report, the, the police report for the month of January, and there's also a press release that was released today, just so you have a same understanding of what, something that happened yesterday as, as our local media, so. Not really looking to discuss that. If you have any comments on the police report or format that you're looking for in the police report for the future, look at it, let me know, we can, we can make that look however you want that to look in the future, so.
Council, have any questions on the?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, go ahead.
What's a Danko violation?
Domestic abuse no contact order.
Okay.
Sorry, some of the titles aren't clear, so yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Good question.
Great question. Sorry. And our records management system has the ability to create that report, so that's, that's where those titles all come from, so I'm not recreating anything, it's just the computer's doing it, so.
Before we move on to the requests, any, any other questions on the police report? Now we'll make a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve it.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same, motion carried.
And
Chief?
Just, I don't think, I don't think you have that. And just so you know, in the future, mileage will also be included on that report, I just didn't have a, a great starting point, obviously coming here partway through January, so that'll be something that'll be on there in the future. The bullet points, um, start with the body cams. So you've got a, a quote in there for the body cams. It's my understanding, this is talking to Danielle, this is an item that was initially part of your budget last year, but then once the, the funds came from the state, it was pulled from the budget with the anticipation that the funds were gonna pay for this, okay? The funds, and again, I've had brief conversations with Danielle about it, the original amount that the city was planning on spending was in the neighborhood of around $30,000 for squad cams, video, squad cams, body cams, and computers to make the system operational. What you've got there is, is a estimate that's considerably less than that. It is in the amount of, sorry, the one that you have is in the amount of $9,300 or a little bit more. This system, the reason it doesn't have that, that cost upfront is because the system, it's a little bit different than other systems in the fact that the real expense is gonna be with the continued subscription. All of the body camera systems out there now are gonna have some sort of subscription, because most of this data is kept, is kept in the cloud. This company, um, recognizes that, that their suite is in the cloud. At about year six or seven, you kind of, it kind of becomes a wash. This system starts to cost about the same as what the other system. However, the other system, they will tell you, any of those ones that are the, they basically, you're paying for the hardware, um, the other systems, they're gonna tell you, need to be replaced in that five, six, seven-year window. So in essence, it's, over the, or the, over the course of about six to seven years, it's gonna cost about the same. So it's got a great upfront cost, it, except we'll have to plan it in our budget, that it, that it's, that it's, um, something that we'll just end up continuing to pay for. I will tell you, um, the amount, that, that, that document that you have as far as for the quote, I've got a newer document through some negotiation with, uh, um, it's called Visual Labs is what we refer to it, it's actual versa term on that quote. Through some negotiations, the price is gonna drop seven and a half percent for the subscription fee, so the amount is actually gonna be 88, $8,829. So, and I've got a copy if anybody wants to see it, but I just got that this afternoon. Any questions on that system? The big difference is you're not paying, I guess the, the easiest way to look at the difference between this and the other ones that, that Jeff had looked at in the past, is you're paying, those other ones, you are paying for proprietary hardware, okay? This we are not, our, our, our telephone will become the body camera. Therefore, when the telephone gets replaced, and they can be replaced with Verizon, the, the cam, the camera's replaced, your hardware's replaced, because really what you're using is an app. So it's a, it's a, it's a system that's been around for 10 years, that there are departments that are using it, and it seems to work well, so. Questions on that, probably gave you more than you wanted. Good? I will tell you that in the next Go ahead.
With this camera system, what do you?
What are we gonna?
You have a special pocket or something, you put it in and then, so it's on, or?
So you'll have a, a pouch that we'll carry on our vest, um, there's, that, there's a set of certain phones that you can use, um, and the phone has a button on it that you can just, it's a programmable button. And with, with the app, that, that button becomes basically the record button, um, and it will communicate with the device in the squad car that will turn on the squad camera, just like any of these other systems out there. There's a squad cam component, and there's the body cam. So, um, the, the, the phone, typically what I, what I've, what I prefer, it's a magnetic pouch, whereas I'll put a metal plate here, and the mag, the magnetic pouch holds really well. So, I mean, you can run with it, and it's gonna hold in place, so. Yeah. It works really well. Question?
Have you used one before?
Body cams, or this, or this specific?
Body cam.
Absolutely. Yep, uh, my previous two departments, we had body cams. But I'll tell you about body cams, initially officers have concerns over that, you know, Big Brother's watching and, um, but in fact, once they're rolled out, um, with one of the platforms that we're using at other agencies, inevitably that, that hardware fails, right? And I had officers who would not, you know, like, they were each assigned to their own body cam, who would not go on shift without some camera, and these are, these are officers who six months prior didn't want them, and because at least then they know, whatever they do is recorded and they feel security in that. So I mean, um, in both agencies, I can say that's exactly what officers end up feeling once they're used to carrying them and knowing that it isn't my purpose to be pulling up videos and making sure that they're doing everything right all the time. Inevitably, if we have complaints, we will review the video footage, but it's not me watching what they're doing all the time, because I think that's most officers' concern.
Did you say the, it's a phone? Do you still have your regular phone, or what?
So, so it still works as a phone, like, you can call and answer the phone, it will, just like if I were to pick up my phone and that was recording, it would always record what is being said, right? And it will not record the other end of the conversation. So that, that, with this platform, the nice part about it is, is the need for the separate camera, the need for the separate recor, uh, voice recorder, this platform does it all. So it's, it's all one tool, so. Thank you. But yes, it's
This is the very, uh,
The versa, yeah, versa The versa term?
Versa term, okay. You got anything on this, Kurt?
Nothing other than I would agree with what he said about cops, myself included, that was working while body cams even came out.
Yep.
This was, nobody liked them. These days, there's people that won't work at a department that don't have them, because it's, it's insurance that they're doing their job, they're doing it right, and there's no arms chair quarterbacking on Monday morning if you did your job right. I think, I think they are a wave of the future that pretty soon will be in every single department, most have them already.
Right. So we're looking at using public safety dollars for this?
Yes.
So if we were to, so we have the, take, for use of those dollars, it's the police department and the fire department?
Yep.
That's it?
Public safety, yep. So basically, if you prove everything that Todd is requesting tonight, that's gonna be roughly right in the 20,000 range of using those funds.
Which is still considerably less than.
And I guess that, that includes what we earmarked that EA, the Employee Assistance Program, we're gonna pay for that $1,500 a year. We earmarked that this year for that public safety aid as well. So, so total of all that would be around 20,000.
And half of that grant, should we ever decide to split it with the fire department, was in the neighborhood of 55, north of 55.
Yeah, yeah. Do you wanna move on to the other bullets here quick, or?
Any other questions on this bullet point? Okay.
Uh, the next, the next bullet point, if I'm not mistaken, is the lockers, yep. Just moving forward with, uh, dealing with some, cleaning up our evidence, our evidence room processes, procedures, and part of that is, these are lockers that we can use for intake of evidence, so, um, necessary to track evidence and everything, so. With the nature of our building here, we can't do, you know, sometimes a, a building that's built around the concept of, of a police department, they'll have a pass-through wall so that, that the evidence goes in, the evidence tech on the other side can take it out. We don't have that, so we're gonna have, this is the next best option, so. I think it was
In my opinion, a long time coming for the city. We need some, some secure storage for evidence.
Any questions on the lockers? For the chief?
And that's the quote, 1,059? Yes.
Yes.
I was looking everywhere, to be honest, the freight is the biggest problem with, for me on this quote, but I was looking everywhere and I couldn't find one with less freight, so I'm like, okay, I guess this is what we're gonna do, so. This place is there, out of the metro, if I'm not mistaken, oh, Georgia. The guy I'm talking to is out of Minneapolis or something, so.
Any more questions on the lockers?
So how big are they, like?
That's a lot of freight.
So it is, it is truly only, it, it's 40, 42 inches worth of lockers only, actually, 42 by 78, it's only Forty-two by seventy-eight, it's only. That was the cheapest freight I found, so. And actually the cheapest lockers, so.
Okay.
Questions on that?
Yeah.
No? Then the next, the next bullet is, is two squad car computers. Two years ago, you replaced one of the squad car computers that was failing, or rather had failed. The other two squad car computers are in desperate need to be replaced. They are seven and, they're seven and eight years old. So, as we know, computers, that's a long time on a computer. The IT department at the county, who helps us with our, with our squad computers, are surprised that ours have lasted this long because of the nature of small department, unlike, let's say, a sheriff's office where that squad car is out and used half the time and then parked the other half of the time. Ours are, some of our computers are on all the time, so it's harder on them, apparently. I'm not a computer guy, so they are surprised that ours have lasted this long. And I can tell you, when I got here, one of the computers was, it's very laggy, it does not, it does not do what it needs to do. So, we've shifted computers around as a Band-Aid for now, but they need to be, the other two need to be replaced.
The quote for both is six thousand four hundred and eighty-four?
Yes. By far the lowest quote I had gotten for this, for this specific computer. I even looked at some other similar type, because this is a, the ones that we have in the cars right now are ruggedized, it's a, it's a Panasonic thirty-one, they are ruggedized. These, these new ones are semi-ruggedized, but over time, we've realized computers in squads don't need to take as much abuse as we, we thought they would have to. So, these are semi-ruggedized, so they're a little bit less, but I priced out other semi-ruggedized computers and this is, Sam has always been pretty good, I've dealt with him for years, so, and I talked to the county, and that's who they use as well, so.
Any more questions for the chief?
What's the total request? I don't know how to do math myself.
Over seventeen? Do you know Lance officially?
I didn't add him up. Oh, with the new dollar amount?
Yeah.
The new dollar amount is for the, for the body cams was eight thousand eight hundred You got a calculator?
Eight thousand, how much?
Eight thousand eight hundred twenty-nine for the, for the, I keep saying the body cams, but it's the body cam slash squad cam, then a thousand fifty-nine for the lockers and.
Sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents.
Say that again?
Sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents.
I will have to come to you, similar topic, I will have to come to you. We have to have a public hearing regarding body cam policy. So, we'll have to, we have to have that, that public hearing on that policy, so.
I approve the three bullet points? Is that what we need to do? Okay.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was the same, motion carried. Thank you, chief.
One thing, so with the other, so we've earmarked a total of twenty thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-one cents from that public safety aid money, because that includes, there was some cameras that were replaced in the evidence room.
Okay.
And the EAP money, so.
More than enough.
So, what was that number again?
That's total, right now, twenty thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-one cents is what I roughly have right now.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight is Apex Engineering Projects. We have engineer Bob Schliemann here from Detroit Lakes, Bob.
Good evening, mayor, council staff. I got three items this evening that I'd like to go over with you. Hopefully, everybody got the agenda that I provided for the packet. So, the first one is just a brief touch on the Trunk Highway fifty-nine and one oh eight Complete Streets project. I think MINDOT opened construction bids on January twenty-sixth. From what we're hearing, bids came in good. Sounds like the estimated city portion is a little substantially lower than what was estimated in the original Schedule I, so we're still waiting for specifics on that, but that sounded good. As Mayor Frazier mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are having a public hearing for that project. It's scheduled for five-thirty on Monday, February twenty-sixth, at the high school. And then, obviously, construction is anticipated to commence this spring. So, the specifics on that, we don't know yet until we get a contractor on board, but looking forward to getting that, that project going with construction this summer. So, the second one, Second Avenue Southeast Drainage Improvements, I believe at the last council meeting, we were authorized to go ahead and advertise for construction bids, so at this time, we are, do anticipate receiving construction bids on March sixth of this year. I believe that's at ten AM, if I recall correctly. So, hopefully, we'll get good bids for that project. And the third item this evening is the Pinewood Estates Development. That is the actual development being proposed at the former county garage site just east of here. I did include a schematic in my agenda that kind of shows what the proposed improvements are for that site. I know city staff and myself have been meeting with county staff on this. I think the last two or three weeks, we've met a couple times to just discuss what the proposed improvements are. So, as you can see there on the schematic, that is actually what is being proposed. We've got kind of a street layout there with the cul-de-sac, we're bringing sanitary sewer and storm sewer up from Third Avenue to the south, and then bringing water main off of Third Street from the east. So, pretty straightforward development. And this evening, I believe Lance has an agreement between the city and county that he wanted to present to you folks, so regarding the services and financial side of things for that project, so I'll let Lance get into that hopefully in a little bit. One thing that I'm here this evening to ask for is the approval of a task order for us to go ahead and move forward with the actual design of the improvements that you see here on this schematic. So, that's included in your, your agenda as well. So, it's, again, just a simple task order for design and bidding services. The other thing that I want to mention here as well, talking with city staff, one thing that we would like to do is actually get a separate estimated cost for installing the sanitary sewer from down here on Third to this first manhole at a, at a greater depth. In, basically, with keeping in mind that in the future, we may want to extend that sanitary sewer to serve as much on Fifth as we can by gravity. So, I think what we'd like to do is try to get a separate number for, like, one number for getting it installed at the depth required to just serve the development that you see here, a separate second number to install this section of gravity sanitary sewer, again, at a greater depth, assuming that sometime in the future, the city may want to extend this to the north and serve Fifth by gravity. It's going to be rather deep in order to do that?
Which way is it flowing?
It's flowing south. So, all this wastewater would basically flow from this end manhole, it would go west and then ultimately down to the south.
Okay.
This is obviously quite a bit higher up here, so in order to get it extended at the lowest grade that we can per MPC standard, which is zero point four percent, the depth up here was going to be around thirty feet, if I recall correctly. So, it would be rather deep, but over time, I think anytime cities can extend sanitary sewer and have not to or not be forced to install a wastewater lift station, they typically take the opportunity to do that, because lift stations are rather expensive to, to install upfront, and then the O and M costs related with those over time, they're expensive as well. So, just again, looking out for the future. Once we get that separate number, then you, as the council, can make a decision, do we want to go that route or don't we? So, just something we thought would be a good idea at this time, as we move ahead.
Are the pumps in the current lift station adequately sized for this?
Yeah, we feel they are. We'll look into that a little bit more during design, but the actual flow that's going to go to this lift station as a result of these few residential units is not going to be substantial. If we someday move, extend that to the north up the Fifth, we would probably want to look at it again. But again, just simple, you know, the residential flows that you typically see, they're not going to be substantial, so. If we're looking at a commercial or industrial setting, we may feel differently, but we think there, the pumps are going to be adequate.
I'll move the approval of this, what is it, task order?
Yes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion.
And this includes looking at both options for the sewer?
That is correct, and we're going to take a pretty aggressive approach on this. Our, our hope is to get, move ahead and get this thing designed in probably around a month, so we can get out and advertise for construction bids as soon as possible. So, we're going to, again, be very aggressive on this design, so.
Any more discussion?
Is county included or involved in that process?
So, I guess I'll let maybe Lance touch on the agreement between the city and the county. So, it's my understanding that basically, the city is going to take the lead in being the contract holder, not only for the engineering services, but also the construction contract if it moves forward. And then, the county is going to reimburse the city for any and all expenses related to this project. Did I miss anything there, Lance?
That sums up the agreement pretty well.
That's pretty simple. It's kind of like when we did with the CASA ninety-six and one hundred project, kind of the same concept, except it was, well, basically, it was the same concept, yep. So, and I believe that agreement is in their packet as well.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was the same, motion carried. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to item number nine, Otter Tail County Pinewood Estates Development Agreement. Is Amy on Zoom?
She is, yep.
Welcome, Amy.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council members. As was just mentioned, we have put together this agreement, actually led by the city, to kind of outline the responsibilities and roles, particularly in the financial side of moving ahead with the infrastructure for Pinewood Estates. And I think you saw the, the infrastructure plan that Bob shared, and so we want to get this moving forward. From the county, the CDA side, our housing committee did review this agreement yesterday and provided direction to move forward pending final CDA board approval, should the city council also approve it next Tuesday. So, that would be our timeline for officially approving, entering into this agreement. I'll defer to Lance for any additional comments or information regarding the agreement.
Sure, just a little, couple things on it. This, Bob kind of provided the, the initial draft of this from a, a different project and just kind of plugged in our information. And then, we kind of, I sent it to Lindsay, our city attorney, for review, and she added some things, so she's reviewed everything. One thing to note is just in, in our agreement or in our responsibilities, we just added that language, that if we do decide to go at a greater depth of this sewer and things like that, it would be our responsibility. That's basically what, what we added. So, that's all kind of in here. If we were to do that, that would be our responsibility. Otherwise, the county will be reimbursing most all the costs, so. Any kind of questions on it?
Councils have any questions for Amy or Lance?
The most all-the-cost statement is kind of, so are we going to be surprised by anything at the end or?
No, I guess it all lays out, the only cost that we would incur would be associated with anything that is not in the infrastructure, that would be the extra costs on the infrastructure for anything in the future, not associated with the development.
Then I moved it, I move to approve the development agreement with Otter Tail County.
Checking that.
Motion and a second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was the same, motion carried. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Let's move on to item number eleven is a library port, which was in your packet. This is FYI item. Councilman Ballard, do you have anything to add?
Probably the only thing to add would be that, as a result of some of these different phone calls that have been made, threats of various natures, we, I brought up the fact that in venue security, bomb, bomb threats are usually a joke until they're not, and then, you know, by the time they're, you know they're not, it's too late. It's, the climate being what it is, I recommended that they lock the east door for entrance. They'll still be able to, to exit the building with that, with that door, but all entrance other, other than for polling days, election days, just because of the amount of traffic, but.
It is currently open to enter now, the east door?
It, it has been, but after we, we passed, passed it, that that door would be locked, so anybody coming in during library hours has to come in the north main door, just for safety reasons, for the people that are working there and people there.
That's really about the only thing we changed or that was changed during the, during the
Council, have any questions?
Is it going to be unlocked when they have meetings in that meeting room or not?
Well, they'll be given a key, the, if, if the meeting, if the meetings are held during hours, library hours, it will not, they'll, they'll have to come in that main door. If they're held after hours, they're given a key anyway.
Okay.
So, they'll still have access, but after hours, that, I don't know what you call that, date is lowered so that they don't have access to the other part of the library, just the, just the two rooms.
Thank you, Kevin. Item number fifteen, which we had, was pay, pay request for hammer construction for the Aquatic Center, Lance?
All right, this is something I just got right before the council meeting. I was talking with Scott about another issue and he realized that he never sent this over, so that's why it's not in your packet, but it's pretty straightforward. He looked it all over, it's the pay request for the January work done at the pool.
So, the fifteen thousand six forty-two ninety-two on this one is included in the price that's reflected down here for the total of ninety-one two fifty-three?
Where are you at?
On the back of the email for the letter, it says there's a, net changes by change order is fifteen thousand six forty-two ninety-two. Is that reflected in this?
It looks like that. So, no, this is, this is all previous change orders there, so total approved this month, there is no additions. I think that, the way it looks, those are the total change orders for the whole project. And if you see in the, in the middle of that, it says total approved this month, there were no change, change orders or additions this month, so.
So, the total is ninety-one thousand two fifty-three?
Total request right now, the current request for payment is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-six and seventy-six cents. So, that's above that box there on the right. That's the total request for this, for January.
You have no qualms with that?
Like I said, I just got it when you guys did. Scott looked all, through it all, so I'm trusting Scott as he's recommending to pay it, so.
it, so.
Okay. I move to approve the current amount of 258,38676.
I'll second that. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 12, administrator report. Lance?
Okay, since the last meeting, I worked with the clerk and mayor to set the council agenda and prep for the city council meeting, attended a department head meeting, met with Chief Quinton, Superintendent Corf, and school board members John Carter and Molly Welch about the possibility of adding an SRO position at the school. Continued to work with deed grant specialist coordinator Brennan McKeig on the state grant funds for the pool. Danielle and I met with Rebecca Peterson from West Central Initiative about the pool fund and the process to request reimbursements for the pool construction costs, and then sent the first request to West Central Initiative. Attended a pool committee meeting, met with city engineer Bob Schliemann about the PFA funding for the 2425 project, met with Amy Baldwin and Kevin, Kevin Keery from Ottertail County, and city engineer Bob Schliemann about the Pinewood Estates development, attended the EDA event with the presentation from the West Central Small Business Development Center, and worked with the Village Business Institute to set up a supervisor training. Any questions?
Thank you, Lance.
The SRO position.
Yep.
The state has just changed the ruling on that, right?
Ah, they're working on changing some language in there about what use of force means, I think, because there was a bunch of people, or a bunch of schools who took the SROs out there for a while after that language, and I haven't followed it as much. I know they want to change the, or they, yesterday even, the first part of the legislative session, they were on it trying to change that language right away, but it's not, I think all the SROs in the state are pretty much back in right now.
Yeah, given that pending verbiage change, it was kind of loosely agreed that it needed to be changed, and they couldn't change it without whatever legislation. So word is, they're changing it because the SROs are in high demand and the schools were operating without any. So they pretty much iced the, iced the verbiage until they can figure out the right verbiage.
So we, we met with the school and that they're starting some budget talks and things of what's, where their priorities are, so they'll come back to us in a month or two whether or not they want to try and proceed with an SRO or not. So that's kind of just where it's at.
Per a news report that I had heard on it, they were, it sounded like they were leaving and some of that up to the individual districts with setting, setting some of that up.
That may be where it lands. It would have to be a written policy at that point. I know it still had to be changed legislatively to not, not be as strict, if you will. It wasn't, it wasn't, every situation calls for different reaction. They weren't leaving any room for that.
No.
Any other questions for Lance? Okay, thank you. Item number 13, mayor report, just a few items. February 8th, attended Pelican Rapids Economic Development Authority's Small Business Session here at City Hall. There was a total of 30 people present. It was a great turnout for that meeting and good presentation, and I know Lou will be covering that this week in the Pelican Press. January 31st, conversations with the mayor session at historic City Hall. Yesterday, Lance and I reviewed the agenda for this afternoon city council meeting and also, yesterday afternoon, attended the city council work session here at City Hall. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other business, was that a motion?
When you're ready.
Motion adjourned? Second? Motion second? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. All is the same? Meeting adjourned.
Kevin, did you second that?
I did.
Oh, okay, thank you.